Okay, good evening, everyone. It is December 7th, 2021. We're in regular city council meeting of the city of West Liberty, Iowa. All councilors are present. Also in attendance is city manager Dave Ogulon and treasurer, city clerk Gertz. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second, sorry. Second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. We have a public hearing in front of the council tonight, and this is a public hearing on donation of AEDs to John D. Gompf's charity. Is there a motion to the public hearing? Motion and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Member of the hearing?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Right? Yes. Okay, the meeting, public hearing is open for the donation of two AEDs to the John D. Gompf's charity. Anyone in the chambers or online that has any input, questions, or concerns to reference this gifted AEDs to the charity? Anybody? Okay, I hear one here at the meeting in public. So we will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Councillor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
And councilmember Rock?
Yes.
The public hearing is closed. We do have a resolution in front of us. This is 2021-1207-75, a resolution to donate those AEDs to the said charity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second is heard. Any further discussion? Hearing none, councilmember Zachary? Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferrin?
Yes.
Councillor Smith? Yes. Resolution is passed. Would you like to just let them know that they'll be recipient of those AEDs then?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think special thanks to Kim too for sort of sum it up with me. Yep, this comes idea of events process, so I will let her know.
And we have in front of us approval of the consent agenda, and there's three items on that. And the first item is the council meeting minutes of November 16, a Class E liquor license with Sunday sales for Jeff's Market, and a Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for El patio.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved and a second, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we just wanted to add that there was a typo on the first part. It was a five zero, it should be a four zero, and that's been amended. And we will have the official amended document signed.
Okay, sounds great. Any further? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody oppose? The consent agenda has passed five zero. Onto the vendor vouchers claims list. This is in the amount of $202,012.48. Motion and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussions, all in favor?
All right.
Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. We have a group with us tonight for public comments and correspondence. The same group was here about a month ago, maybe five weeks ago. Okay, and again, I know that we allowed 20 minutes for the group to speak. So without, we didn't have any warning that they were on the agenda. So I'm going to allow, we'll give you a couple of minutes. I know that Emily from the Catholic Worker House, I spoke with her, she has like three or four people that would like to speak, but I'm gonna stick with the limit. I did speak with a few of you and Emily, and just talked about how the council hasn't made any plans yet for the money that's been asked about and have asked. I have explained that there's a new mayor and new council coming in in less than three weeks. So that would be something that you guys may want to make sure who's coming in and get their email addresses and everything also. Okay, so Emily, I'm only asking you because I know you personally. Is there anybody to speak, maybe like half a minute to a minute?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll try to get the three or four people in in the couple of minutes.
We can do that.
Okay, okay.
Good evening. My name is Edgar.
My name is Edgar.
I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to express ourselves for the second time. Thank you for your time. But I just want to say that we don't want you just to listen. We want you to take actions around the needs that we have. We are essential workers and like we are essential workers of this city. We need your support to receive economic relief. We know it's sent to each county of the state. To make the economic of the town stronger. We were excluded from the economic relief that was given. And we were essential workers during the pandemic. In the most difficult period. Risking our lives. Families. And homes. And even with all of that, we were upfront. Keeping the economy going of this town. Without any benefit. No, the contrary, we were discriminated. Because of the authorities and leaving us out and not offering us any kind of relief. We don't want you to see us just like manual labor work or hand of this town. But as human beings as well, and we need this help. We know that we're the strong arm. Well, thank you for listening, and I hope that this message gets through, so you take action to meet our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you say you had one more person to speak? Can I, can I, can I ask, when, I know there was Laura, I think, spoke last night. Did we send, did you guys send the, because I know everybody had their speeches kind of written out. Did you send those to the city in correspondence or anything like that? Could we possibly get that? Just so we have that on file. Like if Edgar would like to have, because you can, if you can type it or send it or photocopy it, and then just send it to the city or fax it or email a PDF or something of it. At least in there you have a document. Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening to everyone.
My name is Ruth Palma. I gave my testimony last time. We are the representatives of our partners.
I'm here representing all of my people here.
We are organizing ourselves as the excluded workers. We are here to give you a little bit of how we're feeling. We are the people that work in this town cleaning, working in construction hotels. Taking care of kids, cooking.
We are here to give you a little bit of how we're feeling.
We are here to give you a little bit of how we're feeling. We are here to give you a little bit of how we're feeling and hoping that you will give us the support. We are the people that have declared an impound. We are the ones who are in relief with all of this. But even though we are stealing, we are stealing. We also pay taxes, but even though we don't receive a stimulus help economically.
May I ask also, if you're going to send the testimonies or the statements or whatever, can we put a name and either an email address or phone number or something in case there's any questions that need to be, you know, we'd like to clarify or anything else also? Okay, we are at five minutes. And that, is there anybody else that has a quick?
Anyone else who wants to say hello? Some, some, yes, we will. We have an estimate of how many people have been affected. We pulled the numbers from the U.S. Census Bureau. And we are asking that you give us checks of $1,200, stimulus checks, $1,200. The city of Iowa City, it's the entregos, $2,000. We are still working. But we are still paying. And so we want to make sure that we understand what we are doing.
So she's saying in Iowa City, that's coming, they're asking for stimulus checks of $2,000. And so that's why she's, they're asking for $1,200, and that you can look to the U.S. Census Bureau to get estimates.
So can you add that information when it's sent?
Sure.
And that also, but I also like to remind people that Iowa City and West Liberty are two totally different tax bases.
Yes.
Iowa City has lots of, lots of businesses. They get different types of grants because they're a different population. They're over a certain amount of population. We only, you know, we're under 5,000, we only get, so the tax base is a different tax base. So I just wanted to make sure that we understood that.
They could support us if they could. If they could give us this amount of support. Oh, do you, Hershey, have a question? You know, if it's not possible to support us with that amount of money, would you consider working with Muscatine County to combine work space?
So what I would ask, as I said, that we have a new mayor, we have new council members, is kind of type this up as a, maybe as a unity worker, essential worker type as a group. Ask, you know, put that, this is what we would like to see, so we don't have a whole bunch of different people's perspectives. So we could do that as a group.
Can I, can I ask if everyone lives here in West Liberty or Muscatine County?
Some of them live in West Liberty. Exactly. And there's two other people, three of us.
Okay, but everybody lives in West Liberty?
Yeah.
So what's the total number we're talking about in West Liberty?
Um, immigrants, we've calculated 1,000 adults.
And, and, and so I guess what I'm also would be part of that is when we have individuals come and ask for things, if they're not really spelled out, we don't really have it. So that would be part of that, maybe that unity letter is, here's how many essential workers that are affected, here's how many people that, you know, would be part of, we would like to see be given assistance. So that all number is in the council, because basically everything comes down to dollars and cents. And we kind of don't understand that. We don't understand what the numbers are, then we wouldn't have any idea. Okay? So you guys could organize that and then send that to maybe have that sent to the city manager or whatever, attention to the council members or whatever, and then they can distribute that to the council. Okay? Thank you, guys. Ladies, and when I say guys, I mean everybody, but thank you.
Thank you for, gracias por escuchar. Esperando una respuesta positiva de ustedes.
Thank you for listening, and we hope to hear a positive response.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comments here outside of the essential workers unity group? Don't hear anyone here. What about on, anybody for public comments?
I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand or chatting.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, let's go around to the councilors. Councilor Rock? Councilor Zachary? Councilor McFerrin? I think.
I had some folks come up to me during the open house when I sat at Safer for the kind of the city's representation. And then this week afterwards, I had some people come up to me, and I just wanted to share the comments. I did forward them on to Dave and Lee, but we had a couple of people who, one in particular, was concerned about the additional percentage fee. I guess they're being charged in order to make payments for the city bill. I don't quite understand that, but that was a question.
I guess if you were paying with a card, there is a convenience.
Okay. Maybe that's.
That's pretty standard of moving.
At all businesses. Yeah, it's not a fee that the city implements, that's a fee that the credit card processors. Actually, that's, we have looked to try to, I'm actually the organizational work. Lowest fee because we are a municipality, but again, we have no control, it's like, it's inconvenient. Okay, if you want to use your debit card, your credit card.
When you're charged, same thing, if you go to the license bureau and pay your county taxes or whatever, it's, there's always a contingency associated if you're using a debit or a credit card.
But that's, that's associated with the financial institution. That's not our charge. The city does not offer that charge, and we have no control over that charge other than to stick into a financial institution that offers things. And currently, right now, the processes are credit cards are through, are recommended through the Iowa League of Cities. For that reason, is because they, the Iowa League of Cities.
So would that be similar to white people a little bit? See that fee is because businesses actually pay that fee to the credit card companies when you do that, like convenience stores and other things.
Private business.
But in a municipality, for the credit card company to get that, they charge the customer enough in this.
You know, and the thing, you know, you know, having set up for ACH, that doesn't cost them anything. They have a side of the ACH where they draw that out of their account on a set day, so they know what day it's coming out. And then there's no convenience, there's no additional charge. So we try to encourage many people that don't want to pay the convenience to come down and drop off on your check. And for the taking care of, there's no additional fee.
Okay, that's, okay, that's good. And then somebody else had some issues with parked cars. I believe she lives on the corner of, like Third and Clark? Or, yeah, I think it's Third and Clark. They're on Clark Street, I guess there's some parked cars that have been kind of long term on Clark Street. She's concerned about perhaps activity going on. And then we've had another individual, Peterson, contact me about the city cemetery. And I believe we.
We'll take care of it.
Okay.
It's resolved.
Okay, good.
Last week.
Last week, okay.
Wednesday or Thursday, yeah, it's all resolved.
Okay, good, yeah. Then today I received a call from a resident on Short Street about the corn husks from the farm field. The, the farm, the ag land and the city, I mean, they just butt up against, of course. And he is farming right up to the borderline. So I think a lot of that refuse kind of flows into the neighborhoods, and they had a lot of cleanup to do, so. You know, I've been with the individuals before, and we can recommend to the farmer to, and we've made recommendations, but we have no, you know, we have no enforcing to do that. It's, you know, like plastic bags and everything else. Unfortunately, you know, we try to enforce that people clean up. And like, that's when you have agriculture come to the city limits and they need. Right, there's no bucket there. So they're right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it can be smell, it can be, you know, corn stalks or, you know. Yeah, ladybugs or whatever. I mean, yeah, but again, I didn't know if there's any snow fencing or is that? So at one time, the farmer, the farmer did use to put snow. I know, and it was communicated to me also at the time, our city staff had placed snow fence, I don't know. And I spoke with our staff, they, they used to do it, but it was my understanding that we shouldn't be doing it because it's our land. And Short Street is not our land either. And so that was why it was recommended if the farmer would be interested in putting up a snow fence to help, you know, clean some of that debris that, that, because those straight winds come through there. But again, we have no way of enforcing it other than asking, you know, having them be neighbors and be neighborly and have that conversation amongst themselves. And that's, that's all that came up to me. And as far as the, the, I think we had. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you both for doing that.
Councillor Rock? Does the administrative staff have anything?
The only thing we received or respondents was the Muscatine Journal had provided a letter just asking to be thought of for the, for the, for the city to be considered as official newspaper.
Sure.
As long as.
Thank you. We're on to new business. We have a resolution 2021-1207-76, and this is the resolution authorizing and approving the law agreement and providing the issue, meaning the payment for taxable sewer revenue refunding bond. And this is a Series 2021 C.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, do you have, on the meeting with us, is our financial advisor with Drunkland Securities. Chip, would you like to take a few minutes and just over our final rate and, yeah?
You bet, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Appreciate being with you remotely this evening. So we received two proposals for the, for the taxable sewer revenue refunding from Midwest One Bank and from West Liberty State Bank. The better proposal was from Midwest One at 1.50%. And that will be a fixed rate through 2027. That's the final maturity date on this sewer revenue refunding. That's one year shorter than the existing Series 2015 sewer revenue debt that we're refunding. And we're able to keep the debt one year shorter because we're applying the current reserve fund balance to buy down the refunding. We can apply the reserve fund, keep the debt service approximately equal to what it is, what it has been on the Series 2015 debt, and still have the city realize about $66,500 in true net savings over time. When you combine that with the roughly $170,000 in savings that the city realized on the, on the two water revenue refundings that closed in June, the total savings between the two water revenue refundings and the sewer revenue refunding that we're talking about tonight is approximately $237,300. So a really positive savings share for the city from that standpoint and those two utilities. One other item, the existing rate on the 2015 sewer revenue debt that we're refunding is, it averages 3.89%. So it takes it down to 1.50%. And the action, requested action tonight really is a formal award and authorizing issuance of the debt. And this would be the last requested council action on the sewer refunding. And then closing is proposed to occur if you proceed with tonight's act, tonight's action on December 21st. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chip. Is there any questions? I have to admit, I didn't read the 98 pages. I looked at the figures, basically.
That's where it stands out. Council, page 41 of your council packet is the key page. It has been, that's the debt service comparison. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
Okay, hearing no questions for Chip. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zachary? Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Have a nice evening, Chip.
Thanks, Chip.
Thank you.
Documents submitted over tomorrow, when they're sending.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to resolution dash 77. This is accepting and approving the filing of the annual financial report for the fiscal year 2020-2021 to the state auditor's office.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just add that the annual financial report was filed on December 1. We can do that. We have posted it to our paper for public access to see our June 30th numbers. We are continuing to work through our audit for fiscal year 2021. We have notified the, there may be some amendments to the annual financial report once we have completed the fiscal year 2021 audit. And so, and then thanks again to Tim with the West Liberty Index of working with us to get our information posted publicly. Okay?
Okay. Anything further? Hearing none, councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zachary? Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Okay, passes five zero. We can file it. We have a change order in front of us in the resolution dash seven eight, and this is the approved change order number nine, and that's for city hall and police building upgrades. This is to S G Construction, the amount of two thousand three hundred and thirty two dollars.
Motion.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zach Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passes five zero. We have uh next a discussion inappropriate follow-up for purchasing a wastewater treatment plant uh department vehicle.
You should have, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you should have in the packets I presented, you should have those those documents for the bits.
Yes, and I I think that that this vehicle that we're replacing was in the vehicle replacement, but it was another year or two, I believe.
That's correct.
That's correct. And what Craig did is he went out on the uh uh on the DOT website because they bid all kinds of vehicles that save you from having to go. Typically, you can go to a local dealer to see if they'll match the state bid, but he got the price um of a vehicle and it covers several different models of pickups, so it's hard to say which one you'll end up with. But uh it's thirty weeks out, the base price of the vehicle with state bid price was thirty four five oh two three cents. And he wanted to add a couple of options to it, then add an additional nine hundred and forty dollars to that total price. And I do believe this is a crew cab pickup rather than just a T V. Going to meetings and there's more about when they go like to water wastewater conference. They'll take three or four people, they can take one vehicle, so they'll have to take them, so. Make sure we get our graphics on them. Yes. Yeah, anything that we buy, we'll have our own graphics.
So this this would then push push back their capital improvements for another vehicle a couple more years beyond the next replacement.
They just have.
Yeah. They just have one.
They just have the one, so yeah, that'll be.
So it's moved up like a year.
It moved up a year or two, I believe.
It's a, it's a, it was scheduled to be in the budget for the next fiscal year and um and so this is just moving it up into this current fiscal year. Um we do not, I mean, again, it just depends on the delivery of it, um because it is taking, just like city manager who went and said it's taking thirty weeks, thirty weeks. So I mean, there's a good chance that it may not get delivered until the next. But if it gets delivered before, then we would do a budget of, no, it gets coming in, we'll do the budget amendment. Um the sewer fund is strong, um it can support the purchase um a year earlier versus waiting another year. Um and we would like to recognize um superintendent Danny Goodell has been working with the wastewater treatment plant with Craig and um and sharing their sewer truck um with them, so they've not had to go without a vehicle, so. So the two departments have worked together nicely to make sure that. Um but again, it's, that's kind of in your memo as far as the timeframe and things, but.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second has been made. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. We're on to discussion and appropriate follow-up of naming the official newspaper for the city of West Liberty. Uh traditionally, it's been always been uh the West Liberty Index uh or weekly and uh if for some reason that we needed to get something out, you know, soon they can put it out in the next uh the next news cycle, then we would use the Muscatine Journal as the backup newspaper.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Primary index and secondary has been the Muscatine Journal. Um both of, I mean, a Muscatine Journal, um they've had some changes as well and um there's certainly a a limited time to get turned around with them now as well. So either newspaper is about the same as far as um having lead time for communication and posting publications, legal publications. So there's um one's not it's just the journal prints on a daily basis versus a weekly basis is really what we're looking at as far as the difference. I don't know what the distribution is, oh, sorry.
The index as primary with the journal as our secondary.
Second. There's been a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. We're on to discussion and appropriate follow-up for uh the West Liberty R and R Amendment Emergency Re uh Replacement.
Is this the risk and resilience?
Yes.
It's the emergency.
Emergency Response Plan.
Mark, yeah.
All the same. It's all the same.
Uh the emergency response. Current requirement, wrong with it, but the emergency response plan is part of the plan. This was just the second piece that had to be.
I'll make a motion to approve the R and R plan.
Sir, a second? Motion in a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. Uh next on our agenda is set a date for public hearing to adopt flood in management ordinance on December twenty first at seven thirty.
Motion.
Sir, second, sir. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just to add, um so um I have been in discussion with uh with the FEMA and um DNR and understanding that in two thousand and one, the city had passed an order did not include all of the required uh pieces that needed to be a part of the flood management program, included also with stuffs, so um we will have a uh an ordinance before us that has all the requirements uh that is for the flood management, flood blame, so that our residents can qualify for flood insurance coverage and FEMA assistance if needed during flood.
Sounds very. Okay, everyone and all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Public hearing set then with five zero vote. We're on to our reports. Let's go ahead and Leo, you're first up, city engineer.
Yes, um well, number two, Northway um has pretty much blown getting um getting their their winch out of the roof during good, but they do tell me they're gonna be there tomorrow to get that done. So I sent a note to Ed, I called him today also, um left a message for him. And then um once they do that, Kenny Morrison said it won't take him but a couple of days to um rehab that roof so that there's an opening that they can get the drill rig and the brush through. So that all should be happening in the next month. Um Northway, I told them that the city was not pleased that they've been dragging their feet. They said they got into a real problem with a well in in um Corvail and that they are done with that well tomorrow and they're, the same rig is going from Corvail to you guys tomorrow. So hopefully all that gets done and we can, we can move that forward. Next thing is uh that emergency response plan. Chris Perisic, who's been worked with your water quite a bit, um will be doing that plan. She's already been working on it. And I think tomorrow she planned on getting with Danny and trying to get things taken, started uh put into place on that. That is due by the end of the month. And then Rainbow and Maxon, I think I told you guys that I would do a presentation tonight, but I didn't. Somehow I skipped my memory here, so I guess I can either do it. We are ready to go as far as the preliminary design on the street project. We can either do it at the next meeting or wait till the first one in January for a like a ten minute presentation. Um I'm I'm available for either way, or I could even do both. Doesn't make any difference.
We were looking at maybe having you come at the next meeting and do it as part of a work session, Leo.
Perfect, thank you. Yep, I'll be there, I'll be ready. So what I need to do is um make sure that you remind me to get my stuff into Lee. I forgot that, that when I was thinking about it this time, I thought I gotta get that ahead of time. But we do have everything ready. We already um gave a presentation to city manager, so I think we're we're in good shape and I think the city's gonna be pleased with some of the options and where we're at. That's all I had tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for? Hearing none. Thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Staff, a minute thing to add?
Anything to add? Just, you have any questions? I'm gonna try to answer any questions.
Any, any questions uh from the staff meetings?
On the notes, it looks like we're having a work session next meeting or before next meeting. Is that gonna give us enough time to do, talk to Leo and?
Yes.
We're having we'll, we'll provide you an updated for regards to it. Okay, okay. And the only other thing I had to add was um we did receive, um we wrote a grant um to the Health Resources and Service Administration um and uh the city of West Liberty. Um the the funds that we applied for is um revenue reimbursement for the services for emergency services. Um uh in in coordination with the uh COVID uh situations and and with the staffing for that, and we have been awarded ten thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars ninety five cents uh to help offset some of uh those emergency expenditures. So um so how that.
Does any of the counselors have anything to share for, from any committees, city boards, or any special meetings that you've attended? Hearing none?
I have a question. Um she uh Dana Dominguez would like to ask a question if she could before we close. It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, that's fine.
You can go ahead, um Dana.
Okay. Thank you so much. Sorry I didn't chime in earlier. Um I was just wondering when the paramedic position was gonna be posted. I know it's been lots of weeks since it was approved and there were over twenty calls in the last seven days. And the three of those times, both our ambulances were out, and so it just is a very dire need right now, and so I was wondering when we could expect that to be posted.
Well, uh Dana, I would, I would uh have, that's a, that's a day-to-day operations question, not a council question, so I I uh I would probably have the chief ask that question, I guess, uh from city hall. Um and that, but like I said, it's, that's a day-to-day operations, not a city council question. So I'll just leave it as that, and uh he can contact city hall, talk to the city manager, or or uh Lee, reference that.
Well, I mean, as a, an elected official, I've had people come to me and and me telling them, well, I'm not in office yet. But they, it seems to be that they are asking that question, not getting answers. So I just wanted to bring that up, but I understand um and I can, I can follow up with that.
So noted. Thank you, Dana. Anything else from the council? Make a motion for adjournment? Sir, second. Motion in second. Is there any further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? We're closed tonight. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone.